Call to meeting Historic District Review Board, January 31st, 2025. Roll call.
Joan Cooper.
Kathy Glasser.
Libby Wright.
Ken Monarch.
We have established a form. We will stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we start with our organizational meeting and even though we don't have a lot of audience, people may be watching online, if you could just give us your name and maybe tell us a little about yourself.
I'm Joan Cooper. I've lived in Cape Charles for one year. In November was my first anniversary. I've owned a house here for longer than that. I came here from Maryland and I have 40 years of government service as a military and civilian.
Good for you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ken?
Ken Monarch. Originally from outside of Philadelphia most of my life, moved here two and a half years ago.
Now you're here.
And now I'm here.
Okay. We need to elect a chair and a vice chair and a secretary. Just ask for nominations?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
So I'm happy to handle this for you. So does anybody wish to nominate any person for chairman?
I would like to nominate Kathy.
Do we have a second to that nomination?
Yes, I do, I do. Second.
Ken seconds it or any further nominations? Hearing none, I'm going to close the nominations. Can we vote on Kathy? Libby for as the chairman? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. So Kathy, take it over there for the election of a vice chair, please.
Okay. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I can't nominate myself.
Okay, I nominate. I just want to make sure you were okay with it.
Well, will that change anything? I don't think so.
I nominate Libby for vice chair. Anyone want a second?
Second it.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Secretary?
That would be me.
That's you. I was gonna say, we don't do that. So Tracy?
Confirm that Tracy will remain.
Tracy will remain. Okay. We need to appoint a representative to the Harbor Area Review Board from our board.
So what does the Harbor Area Review Board do?
Right. Often if it impacts some of the things that we do, we have representatives on other boards and vice versa. Like the town council would have a representative on. Go ahead.
I'll help a little bit.
Yeah.
So the Harbor Area Review Board, they are, it's an overlay district in the town and covered under Article 9 of our zoning ordinance. And they are concerned with what may be any historic areas or heritage areas around the harbor development area. So really the whole basin of the harbor, north and south, is, has a review function of a Harbor Area Review Board. It is composed of two members, representative from the Planning Commission, representative from this board, representative from town council, and then there are citizen appointments to that board. And if there are any development plans that get filed that occur on those parcels surrounding the harbor, then that board is activated and called in to review it. Similar to what your function is when you're looking at development plans, they are looking at, I can't say we have actual guidelines in place right now, but trying to ensure a consistency of development pattern in the harbor area.
My understanding is they don't meet regularly.
They don't because we have not had many applications coming forward for development of the parcels around the harbor. And it does mean north and south of the harbor and the east, the east side of the harbor is where you're looking for development. So for example, the last time they met was when the Rosenwald School Project was going forward for its renovation plans. That building, that was just at the tail end of what we call the harbor area that's defined under that overlay district. We also pulled them in when we were, we were looking at a proposed visitor center just, just outside of Strawberry Plaza. If you know where that is, where the train car is, that's where a proposed visitor center and bathroom is, is proposed to go for the town. They came and reviewed that plan to give you some idea of things they take up. Their last big, big project was the, was the yacht center at the south end of the harbor. So gives you an idea.
So, does anyone want a? I volunteer, but do we have any nominations?
Well, do we want to wait to maybe ask some of the other members of the?
Well, you only have one other member who's not present, which is Pat.
Yeah. I don't want to speak for her, but she said that might be, we were.
It's your call if you want to defer to all five of you who are present. You can do that.
Okay.
I have no agenda. I haven't scheduled for an upcoming meeting. We have not canceled February yet because the deadline for applications is one month preceding their next meeting date. So I'm another, oh, well, I have not canceled, sorry. I have it at the end of January. So we have no application files, so I will have no meeting in February for the harbor. So yes, you can wait until your next meeting in February to make this decision. There's not a chance of a meeting until March now.
Make a movement.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we defer this discussion until all of the members of the board are present.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, Libby. Do we have any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Did everyone read through the previous minutes?
Yeah, I only had a couple, picked up a couple of minors ones. One is, says Elizabeth Wright was not in attendance. And I don't know if that's just a mix-up on, first page, very top paragraph.
Oh, I see.
Oh, no, I see. There was not attendance, did we get taken?
Then the only other thing, and it's just a clarification, it's minor, and it's, we had a big discussion, and this is the next page, page 2D, about the metal door. And there were, there was some confusion that there was a side door and a back door. And there was only, there was no back door. So I, I just say front door and a side door near the rear of the house, something like that.
Yeah, it's confusing. It says side door was located on the back.
That's because that's how it was written in the application.
But it's not a side door, it's a back door.
Yeah. Well, she said it's a side door.
No, no, it's a side, it's a side.
Oh, it is a, so there's no door on the back?
No, there's no door in the back, yeah.
Okay.
Which is kind of why I wanted to clear it.
Any other comments?
I don't see any comments.
Do we?
I'll make a motion that we approve of the minutes.
Second.
Oops.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No unfinished business? New business? No fence installations? Modifications to approve? None? Renovations? Minor? None? Renovations, additions, and new construction? And we have to call him?
I'll call it up to you. 1-757?
Aye.
(phone rings)
Oops. Okay, 1-757.
(phone rings)
My finger is a little too fat. Is that right? We had too many numbers in there.
(phone rings)
No? Okay. Hey, what's his name?
Hello?
Hello, this is the Historic District Review Board. Is this John McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Hi, we are reviewing your application. So if you would like to just hang on and?
I'm gonna give a little overview.
Tracy's gonna talk and then if we have questions, we'll address them directly.
Okay.
Okay.
For everyone on Facebook, the applicant is present by telephone. His name is John McLaughlin and he, this is for 500 Monroe Avenue. And the applicant is seeking to replace six two-over-two double hung wood windows with six two-over-two single divided light double hung vinyl windows on the two-story single family home. The trim and the sill will stay intact. And the window configurations and sizes were, were all different, so I listed them for you. We have a front with a two-over-two, a front side with a two-over-two. The two dining room windows with, he just gave sizes, they were 33.5 by 68.75. And then there was a dining room window and a basement. And to give a little background, this home was approved on October 18th, 2023 for a certificate of appropriateness for renovations. Therefore, the board will need to review the past approval and verify that it coincides with the new proposed window renovation. Also, the applicant will need to inform the board if or when the past renovations will be completed. The application did include the outdoor, the, this application, the COA application, did not include the outdoor shower request, but his zoning clearance did include it. So, and also just to give you, to inform you, I have talked to the applicant about the renovations that were to do on the rear of the house. The accessory dwelling unit did get completed, but the second part of that did not. And he does know that since he is not doing any work at all, that that has expired and he will come back when he's ready to do those renovations.
Mr. McLaughlin, did you hear all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you can, the applicant is available for you to answer any questions or clear up any, anything that you may have.
I have a question. Going back to the description of the windows, are you putting in two-over-two or one-over-one? The new ones?
We're, we're putting in two-over-two.
Okay. So all of them will be replaced with two-over-two?
Yeah.
And?
Now, the, the, the house is kind of a mix and like the, the windows on the second and third floor were probably replaced like 10 years ago because they're, they're newer vinyl windows. And I think they're, they're one-over-one. And once we get this finished and go through this, we kind of like to make them all two-over-two. And I understand there's, you can just buy like a little grill and kind of place them on the upper windows to, to make them look like they're two-over-two. You don't really have to replace the windows to get that look.
Okay, but the original configuration on the house was two-over-two?
On the, on the first floor, on the upstairs, I have no idea. They're one-over-one upstairs now.
Okay, but those are newer, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it looked like there were some storm windows on top of those? I can't, on those, the upper level?
There's some, on the, on the lower ones, there's storm windows and they're like caulked, completely shut, or you can't open them. So the windows are, that's one of the reasons we want to replace them is we can't open or close the windows to, to the outdoor air or anything.
Any questions?
Yeah, when I looked at the, when I looked at the house, I thought that the consistency at the lower floor, those vinyl windows would be consistent as long as the trim was kept because the storm windows kind of obscure that and they look like, they, they do look like they're kind of painted or caulked, shut. So that, yeah, I, I.
The new windows won't have storms?
Right.
So that, that is a question also regarding the sill of the windows? On your original home now?
Yeah, it's staying.
It's staying? Okay.
Yeah.
So it'll have that look?
Okay.
Yeah, it'll look, it'll look better than it looks now. Obviously, it doesn't look very good now, but it'll, the sill and all that is staying. We're gonna have to, you know, get that painted and touched up because it, you know, it needs that. I've slowly been working on, we just did the whole porch that we just got painted and scraped. But, you know, that, one thing at a time here.
Yes. Any other questions?
I don't have any problems with the windows. Is that, that's as long as we're, we're just discussing the windows, right?
For now, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Yes, yes, I have two questions. By my account, approximately 11 windows on the first floor, I was just wondering why only six are being replaced?
Because those are the ones that are, that we, that are sealed shut, so those are the ones we want to replace. We, I had talked with my wife about possibly replacing all, all of them. I mean, the other ones work. I'm not really opposed to replacing all of them just so that they're all completely uniform, but like one of them's like within the house, between the house and the sunroom, not even visible, and the others are pretty much between the houses.
And those are, those are working.
I'm okay to do that if you want me to do that.
It, it would be nice to have them all uniform.
I can, I can do that if that's what you, you want.
I, I don't think it matters if the windows work. I'm not gonna force you, I wouldn't want to force you to replace them. So it's the windows that do not open and don't work and are in deteriorating condition that I, that I think we should kind of focus on. Does that make sense?
And the, the other ones are all two-over-two with the sill?
Are the other ones all two-over-two?
The, the, oh.
If, if I replace them, I would make them all two-over-two. I think they're all two-over-two.
Now, I'm talking the ones who are not gonna replace those?
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I can't remember.
Those are two-over-two? I'm sorry?
I think they might be one-over, they might be one-over-one, sorry.
Hold on, hold on.
I can't remember.
Just to clarify, he's saying that the ones he is replacing are on the first floor. The second floor is not being replaced because they were replaced about 10 years ago.
Right.
So I think he's just trying to.
Nothing on the second floor.
So he's trying to make the first floor windows look like the second floor windows.
So there aren't any on the first floor that you're not gonna replace?
The ones on the side that are in between the houses, he did say.
And those are the ones I'm talking about? The ones on the side that you're not gonna replace are two-over-two or one-over-one?
I, I think they might be one-over-one. I, I can't recall 100%. Yeah, I think they're one-over-one on the side there and.
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion? Because we don't want, I wouldn't suggest that the board try to require him to change all the windows, especially if they work or they can go up and down. But what you could do is if he decides to change those within a year, we could, if you could give us the, tell us that they could be approved administratively as long as they were the same type of window. If the board would be agreeable to that, that way he wouldn't have to come back.
I plan on replacing the six with the two-over-two. I can replace all of them, I'm okay with that. I would go with two-over-two because to me that looks more historic and more in keeping with the, the time. And like I said, even if I didn't replace those side ones that I think are one-over-one, you can buy those little grills, my wife tells me, where you just.
The Moyens, yes.
Screw it on the window and it makes it look like it's a two-over-two. And, you know, I, I would ultimately like to have the whole house be two-over-two because that looks more, more.
In keeping with the style?
Yes.
You know, when.
So if you want to, if you want, if you, once you're making your motion, whatever you decide to do, you can put a condition on there. Not on him to get new windows, but it would be okay for him to place Moyens, so it's two-over-two. Or if he decides to replace those windows, that he is not, that are not on this application, then he, if he comes back to us, like say within a year, you wouldn't require him to come back to the board. He could just get those approved administratively.
I was just trying to clarify if the intention is to have all the windows on the first floor match? And that, you have clarified that?
The intention is to have all the windows on the whole house match the two-over-two.
Okay.
I was just gonna get these replaced and then look deeper into what my wife tells me. You could, we can easily place like a grid on those upper windows to make them look two, two-over-two.
Okay. So based on the materials that you have and?
Yeah.
The existing sill, I think the.
I would move that we approve.
Someone needs to make a motion.
I'm sorry, but I have another question.
Okay.
But a clarification.
Okay.
I believe you just stated it, but in your application, per the, per the guide, for the window guidelines in the design guide, it says after repairs are made, prime and repaint windows as needed. Avoid leaving window material unpainted from where the monsoon and sun exposed will degrade materials. What I noticed was that the sills are very much in need of scraping and painting.
And that's, he said that's what.
And I just want to make sure, I just want to go on record, so yes, that, that is not stated, but verbally he has stated he will repair the, the sills. So I don't know if that needs to be updated or verbal is okay?
Verbal is fine because again, that's really not an approval from you. That's just suggestive maintenance that we urge and include in our guidelines for property owners to know and how to handle their property. We deal with long-term maintenance, we neglect enforcement action, that's what it comes to.
Yeah, you know, I've put in a ridiculous amount of money into this house already and I have priorities of what I wanted to fix. And scraping the window sills are very low on my priority because it's not damaging, you know, getting water out of my basement and things like that were a much higher, and getting rid of lead paint were a much higher priority for me. I plan on getting to the sills, but like I said, that was way down on, on my list.
But the design will remain like that?
So I move that we.
When I replace the windows, I'm gonna do the, the sill, every, that whole deal.
Right.
Right. So I move that we approve the window replacements as stated in the thing, consistent with the two-over-two for the first floor.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approved for the windows. Now we can talk about the outdoor shower.
Okay.
I have a question.
Libby?
I don't, sorry, I did not see where it stated with the materials, what the outdoor shower would be with respect to the walls and the floor.
I stated in the application, heavy-duty vinyl.
In the zoning application?
Okay.
Let me pull it up. I need which application. Yeah, in that, in that application.
Am I looking at the wrong one? I don't see it.
No.
It's part five, part five in the zoning application.
You can just, well, there, it was supposed to also be on the certificate of appropriateness. So what they're asking you is just for clarification, so please state for the record, and I do believe Member Monarch asked if the floor and the walls, the material of the floor and the walls, and you stated heavy-duty vinyl, will that be for the floors and the walls?
The, the floor, I'm probably gonna do like a two-by-sixes with like a vinyl composite decking on there, consistent with, you know, like the hardy-plant siding.
And there'll be no roof because it's under a deck, correct?
There'll be no what?
Roof.
Uh, no roof, maybe like a little trim piece or something to make it look, but it'll be open to the, the sky, yes.
Do you have a design or a drawing?
I sent a picture to Tracy here.
I must.
I said a four-by-eight and.
We're looking.
I just, I was just looking at it. I've gone through all my emails here.
Can you give us a size?
You can just, if you would, and that.
Four-by-eight.
Yeah, that might be on the site plan, I do believe. But you could, I think what they're asking is just for the, is it gonna be vertical vinyl, plywood? Well, we don't really manage colors, so.
No, but what's it gonna look like?
I plan on making it look like the garage. It's gonna be white vinyl, so it kind of looks like the hardy-plant siding that's there, heavy-duty vinyl. So it kind of blends in right with the, with the garage itself. That's the plan. And the design is basically, no, I don't know, it's almost like fencing look. You've seen those vinyl fences, I'd say?
So it's gonna be?
Yeah.
The siding will go vertical versus horizontal?
It's gonna have four, four walls. Yeah, vertical, up and down.
Okay.
Yeah. Not, not horizontal.
Well, I think the issue is, because we've dealt this before with houses at, at the quarter lot. And that's, the, the issue here is this is a corner lot, so they're supposed to be in the back of the house, but you've got the, that's where the garage is for the accessory unit and where the, the back, the alley is. So what we've required before, although I don't think it's really stated in the, in the regulations, is that you've gotta discuss, cover that somehow, whether it's with some sort of vegetation or bush, or maybe you put up a wooden fence to conceal it because I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna be exposed, right? Right on an, an open corner.
Well, on my other house on Park Row, we have a, a woody shower that's completely exposed to the street. I, I mean, you drive by, you can see it. I don't, I don't have anything on that, on.
That might have been under different guidelines and because you're here, they have the past two showers that they have seen that could be viewed from the public right of way have required screening. So that's what they're asking.
It can be something as simple as a, a bush or tree or something.
I wasn't planning on putting a, a bush there, but if you want me to put a bush there, I guess I could.
The idea is that it wouldn't.
Can it cover the whole thing?
And no, we're just.
Like an eight-foot?
The idea is to put some sort. The idea is to put some sort of screening to make it look less-
Visible.
Visible.
From the street.
From the street, right.
It has to be screened.
Okay, I, I just don't, I just have to figure out what to put. I really don't know. I haven't researched that, so I'd have to look into that.
If you drive around town, you can see several of them that have done it. It's something as simple as, you know, a piece of shrubbery or a tree or-
If he, if he needs more-
There's a tree on the, on the sidewalk, but, yeah.
If he needs more time for the board to reset-
Yeah, I mean, I can put something there, I guess. I know whatever I come up with, my wife will say something else, so.
Well, they, they would need to, they would need to know, so they might have to maybe defer this part of the application until they get more information. And you can do your research and, and tell us what your wife would like.
English ivy, but-
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, you've got an English ivy on the other side, which, you know, you could, you could do something with that.
It's really just to break it up so it's not so obvious.
All right, yeah, there's cement posts on the side of that sidewalk there. I don't, am I allowed to do anything with those things? I don't even know what they are. They're all the way up, like they had a fence or something there.
I don't know.
They're all along the property line.
Well, I see.
They're three feet tall.
Yeah, it looks like from an old fence.
That could have been from a fence. Again, it's gonna be a tall, a short fence, no, no greater than four feet or five feet.
Yeah. Yeah, I think almost with the fence, I think the old, maybe the best bet is some sort of a shrub, you know, like a butterfly bush grows pretty quickly and big, so I don't, you know, other bushes.
The fence on that side can only be four feet.
Butterfly.
What was that, you?
All right, I'll do a butterfly bush. I have no idea what that is, but my wife's saying-
Your wife will, I'm sure your wife will explain it.
Yeah, one that grows nice and tall and will cover up the shower.
And it's good for the environment.
Okay, the butterfly bush?
Yeah, a few of those would look great, yeah.
Okay, I can do that.
So what does that do about the CWA then? Does he need to put that in there or?
Right, so we can put that in a motion.
Put it in a motion as a condition.
And again, I want to make a-
Sorry.
Sorry, John, this is Katie Nunez, the zoning administrator. So it's not just one butterfly bush, it needs to be to provide consistency. So you can work with, with a landscaper or talk to the garden center, figure out the dimensions of how big one plant will grow, and you may need a couple to serve as the effective screening for the placement of where the shower is going to go.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
And I think that's gonna be part of the motion here, is it may be, I think more than one butterfly bush. We won't specify the number, but it needs to effectively screen the placement length and the width of the, of the shower.
And let's, I just threw out butterfly bush. I mean, I just, any, any appropriate-
That's correct.
-shrubbery that will cover it.
It's gonna have to get some height to it. I'm with you. You're gonna need some height to help cover that.
Or anything else. I understand.
Legos from, is that okay?
Yeah.
Anything that will, will provide the-
We're okay, as long as it's gonna get the necessary height and, and coverage needed to fully shield the, the outdoor fence from the side street. Okay?
Okay, all right. Yeah, we can do, we can do something. I mean, there was, I also kind of, I mean, this would be a different application, but sometimes I think about putting some sort of sideboard or, or something on that underneath the balcony to cover that up, like, almost like a fence or something, but.
You're correct, that would have to be a separate application back to this board for them to consider.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm, I'm just not clear on one thing. We're talking about the eight-foot section. We're also talking about the four-foot side and the four-foot side that would be a door. So they need a screening on three sides, not just the side facing the shower.
That's, that's correct. There needs to be effective landscape screening to shield the, the outdoor fence from the side street. Yes.
The outdoor shower.
What did I say, outdoor fence? Outdoor shower, sorry. Thank you.
So the motion would have to include that?
No, fine.
The shrubs, right?
I have another question.
Contingent on that.
Okay, yeah, I can do that. It's not a, it's not a problem.
Okay, hold, hold on. We need a motion?
What, you want you have-
Oh, I'm sorry. Another question?
Yes. So with respect to the pitch of the shower floor, you mentioned Hardy Plank or whatever, based on its location with that wall, the ADU wall behind it, the pitch would logically be pitched toward the sidewalk, but-
Yeah.
I have, I have a concern about that with, from a safety and sanitary aspect of the-
I'm actually gonna even interject you and stop you. You cannot drain any of your water purposely away from your property. You must contain all of your water generation on your own property. That is state law for storm water.
Did you hear that?
Well, I can tell you on my other property, I have a shower behind the house and I dug a ditch underneath it and, and I dug the ditch deeper, obviously away from my house because I don't want to have water seeping towards my foundation. And I would do the same thing here. And I can tell you, I can walk three feet, two feet behind my shower and there is never any problem with any water. And that shower's over 10 feet away from the property line and 12 feet to the sidewalk, so there will not be a water issue.
Is that what you're planning to do with this one?
Whether he's petty or not, we will not allow him to have drainage directly to the street.
The drainage ditch and I just make it a little bit deeper. Obviously, like I, I-
Like a front drain.
On the Park Row house, I, I did three little ditches that probably extended out from the shower itself, probably about two feet. And I filled them about a foot deep with, with rock so that the water would, would dri, and all completely underneath the shower. I dug that down and, and put about, you know, a foot of stone there and the theory, obviously, or that the water flows away from the house. And I, I can tell you, I walk behind that shower all the time and there's, there's not an issue with water. And this, this shower is gonna be 10 feet from the sidewalk, so.
John, it sounds like you're on, you're on the right, the right track here. Yes, we want it to percolate back into the, into the ground itself. We just can't have any free-flowing water going into the street, especially when it's a non-rain event occurring from the usage of your property.
It won't be an issue.
Okay, very good.
Street, sorry, I wanted to say street, is that the-
Street and, well, the sidewalk too, that's public property, cannot, that's not his, that's not his property.
Got it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
So I move that we approve the shower contingent upon vegetation obscuring the shower from public view on all sides.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's approved. Did you hear the contingency? And I guess that's something you would have to send to, once you have your plan and, right, you can send that in.
Okay.
But it's approved?
All right.
Thank you.
Sounds, sounds good. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I always have trouble with those. So then he'll come back to you with what he plans to put there?
He can provide us information about his screening, yes.
All right.
Okay?
All right.
So I have a question for us. So there's two aspects to the CWA. One is obviously the windows and the other is the shower. I think on the shower, he has some work to do. Can he start on the windows? At least get that done since we approve that part. So it doesn't have to be an all or none, it can be part and parcel. Okay.
That's pretty much what everyone does. Go for what, what you can see first.
I'm the rookie, I'm allowed to answer rookie questions.
No, you're good, you're good.
There are no, there's no other business? Monthly report?
Okay, so enclosed is your staff report for the, the prior month. We did approve three administrative approvals through my office and they are listed below with the addresses and the items. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on those. And I had no other items to report for the month.
I don't have the administrative rules.
It should be, Agenda Item 7A was the very last page on the backside of it.
Oh, I don't have that. Okay.
And so, so again, if it helps, we approved an administrative approval at 504 Bay Avenue to replace their shingle roof, at 627 Jefferson Avenue, again, to replace the shingle roof and vinyl siding, and at 214 Washington Avenue to install a pergola.
Thank you. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you give us an update on the status of the Kellogg Building?
It's under construction right now.
All right, so they're gonna, are they gonna put it back how it was? Are they gonna put, like, there's no windows, so they're gonna have to put new windows in, right?
That's correct. So, so again, the windows are on back order, so the, the roof cover is on now. If you haven't noticed that, the roof is fully back on. But the windows, we know that they are still on back order, but they are coming. So as soon as those come, those will be installed as well. I did not require, I did not require them to replace the original like roll-down doors that had been there for the automotive, when it was an automotive establishment. We have authorized them to move forward with the replacement of the doors that were originally approved by the Historic District Review Board when that was proposed for conversion into a restaurant, just because we, we felt that was an expense that should not be undercurbed because we don't think those roll-top doors from when it was an automotive store are really appropriate for any potential reuse of that property. So that is the only deviation I allowed them to make in the, in the restoration of the property back.
I'm just curious, would they put a little plywood or, because I know it's for sale, we'll just put up some-
No, they, the doors are on order that were approved in those original, in those original plans that were presented to the HDRB that they signed off on.
I mean, the garage doors?
Yeah. They're not garage, they won't be garage doors anymore. They're gonna be actual doors, you know, like normal, and I wish I could remember off the top of my-
Like what they did over at AJ's, and kind of like that?
I think, I think it was similar to that. I think they definitely were two, I can't think of the right words, but yeah, the two pull-apart doors, yes.
Like French doors?
French doors, there it is, French doors.
The windows will look like the windows that were there before. Yes, yeah.
Administrative one C, the pergola, as I recall, I assume that's on the backyard?
Yes.
So it's not facing, so that doesn't address-
It's not visible, that's correct. That's how I can do it administratively.
I got it, okay.
Yes.
But if you can see it?
If it's a chance of it being seen, then it comes to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Like mine.
Thank Tracy.
All right. Any other business? No, Tracy?
Just a little housekeeping. Please, if you all will at least answer my emails, that would be wonderful.
Have you sent me one?
Yes.
I haven't gotten one.
Can you make them so they like request?
I do, and I, for most of you, I did get some. But please, when we send you something, it's-
I didn't get anything from you.
Because we need an answer.
Honestly, I, I wondered why I did not, but I did not get it. So we'll check my email address and see if you got it right.
They go to our-
They also go to the HDRB, so, I mean, your HDRB email, and that's, I gave you that in the packet of how to get there.
Okay.
We went through that in the training.
Okay.
Check your junk.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Oh, yeah, they did tell me one or two times that it goes to junk.
Okay.
So thank you.
Sometimes the packets are quick.
Yeah.
You have other business? I move to adjourn. Need adjourn.